County Commissioners Board Work Session is Wednesday, August 10th, 2022. This is 1:08 PM. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building 1, Room 280. The session is set to go until 2:00 PM. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mahia, I'm the Chair of the Board. I'm joined in the boardroom by Vice Chair Ty Mensah, as well as Commissioner Gary Edwards. We have County Manager Ramiro Chávez, as well as Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. We also have our Human Resources Director Maria Ponte here joining us, as well as other staff members, who will be presenting on the county's 2022-23 General Liability, Property and Cyber Insurance Policy Renewal Information. An decision is requested at the end of this session. So Maria, am I handing it straight to you?
Welcome to the introductions. Good afternoon Commissioners. My name is Maria Ponte, HR Director. And with me is Tammy Devlin, the Risk Manager. And we are here today to provide an update on our insurance fund. Tammy has information that we recently learned in mid-July that changes the forecast that we had made in mid-June. And with that, I'll hand it off to Tammy to share the details.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon Commissioners, Tammy Devlin, Risk Manager. Part of this insurance briefing, we pretty much do this insurance briefing every year, since we've joined the Risk Pool, which is a self-insured pool. So Thurston County joined the Risk Pool in, I think it was 1988. We were one of the founding members when the commercial insurance market was very tough on counties and cities, and we weren't able to get coverage for the needs that we needed. So we joined the pool as a joint venture. And so we're members with 26 other counties. Each county has an option to pick a different deductible. And then any of those claims above that deductible gets shared jointly with the rest of the members. And so each year, the Risk Pool on behalf of its members do a marketing trip, looking at various rates, seeing what the insurance structure will look like. Beyond our self-insured retention, we end up purchasing excess carrier insurance for those unfortunate catastrophic losses that we might have. So each year, the structure that the Risk Pool has may or may not change. And so each year, when that comes due, and we may have coverage changes, I meet with you folks and talk about that, so you see what's coming through. And then we end up turning those into rates per member. And so today, we're just going to walk through some of the things that the Risk Pool has offered, the training, the stuff that they offer to reduce our risk and our exposures. They do loss control. You know, we've done pre-defense review to try to reduce some of our losses, and that's what the Risk Pool does to help us. So we're going to cover the training, we're going to cover some of the insurance market changes, some of the policy review changes, some coverage stuff. And then that in turn will end up turning into our internal rate changes, which is new this year, which has not happened in the past. So next slide, Brian. Just covered that, the next slide. Okay, this is the internal training, mandatory training that Thurston County has provided. This was all online training. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to do in-person yet, but we're hoping to be able to get into in-person training, maybe later this year or early next year. So as you can see, in 2021 and 22, we've definitely had an increase, especially workplace violence, we still do defensive driving. We focus on harassment prevention and our cybersecurity. The Risk Pool again offers the NOVA 4, which is that electronic cybersecurity training. So if you click on something wrong, you're automatically given some training. So that's working through our IT department. Next slide. This is some of the training that's coming up through the Risk Pool. They just launched Management and Supervisory Training 101 and 102. They used to do that in-person, COVID hit, so then they started doing virtual. It was a live virtual, but now we're able to do it on-demand. So the offices that can't, you know, can't be at a specific scheduled training time, that they can actually take it on their own, which is really huge. They got launched that in July. They're also putting together what they call a Training University. And so there's going to be a plethora of training available that will be on-demand for county people to be able to take, and that's going to be free of charge. So you can see some of the member programs. They've done reimbursements for the cyber, NOVA 4, Risk Reduction reimbursements. Our Sheriff's Office joined the Lexi Pool program this last year, which gives them standard operating procedures and daily safety training bulletins to help the sheriff's deputies do their mandatory training that they need to do every year. They awarded 295 scholarships. And then down below on that slide, you can see some of the upcoming training opportunities. Managing Challenging Conversation, Supervisor Bootclamp, Verbal SWAT. They also worked with the sheriff's offices through the 26 counties, and they're launching a virtual training program for the deputies. So they actually put on a helmet, they can walk the deputies through various scenarios and critique their actions and their verbiage, et cetera, when they're approaching different situations. So they're launching that this next year, too. Then the next page, we've got additional scholarship opportunities coming up. We did the land use case, and then they have police training solutions. And then you'll see that graph of some of the scholarship usage that has taken place in this last year. The Risk Pool's coverage year is October to September, so that's why you see October to June here, because we're having through the year, as opposed to Thurston County's financial is January through December.
Sorry Tammy.
No, it's okay.
Land use, like, how does that put into Risk Pool?
Land use decisions that.
Land use case law?
Yup.
Biggest loss we've experienced.
She could have 12 million plus land use issue settled.
So that plays into the Risk Pool of like, okay.
That played a big role in the Risk Pool when we paid that out.
The biggest part of the payout was by the Risk Pool.
Yes, okay.
We only were on the hook for the deductibles.
Okay, so I wasn't, I wasn't sure if the, how the Risk Pool played into that, and if it was something that was paid out of.
The Risk Pool attorneys defended the case.
Okay, that's, I didn't have.
Like if the, like if future wives sued us for not designating the right agricultural soils and our agricultural zoning designations, we could get, and this would access this policy.
If they're seeking monetary compensation.
And it depends on the magnitude of the case. I mean, if it's something that we can manage on our own.
Around some places, maybe the future wives can be asking to go buy, can redo something. They're not necessarily encourage a financial liability.
So we would pay our deductible, then it goes through the pool, depending on what layer the pool has. So all the members pay into that pool up to a certain value, and then we add it to excess carriers and reinsurance. So on another slide, you're going to be able to see that, that list. If you can see that. Next slide, please. This year, the Risk Management Committee, which is, I think there's 12 members of various association part of this group. We look at the claims severity and frequency, and we try to trend those. And so this year, they're going to be focusing on law enforcement, civil rights. That's the highest severity of the claims looking forward. And then leadership in law enforcement. Frequency, we get a lot of road maintenance still, we still have a lot of vehicle operation claims. They're not as high as the severity of the law enforcement, we still get a lot of them. So that, when the underwriters look at our claims history, they look at the frequency and the severity of those claims. So proactive, they're looking at law enforcement's legislation, obviously. And then the corrections area, our intake, our positions with putting inmates within the jail facilities. And so those are the areas that are going to be focusing on this next year.
I'm sorry, again. The law enforcement, civil rights, like what does that mean? Like what, how is that?
Excessive force could be a civil rights, unlawful detention, unlawful arrest, those sorts of.
We have one outstanding case that we did under the Civil Rights Correct.
That's correct, okay.
That involved a shooting.
Yeah, the one, the incident on Tilly in 93.
That, that's exactly it.
Under the Civil Rights.
Okay, thank you. So like I said, each year, the Risk Pool goes out and they look at the structure and they market our program. So they go out to all the reinsurants, all the excess carriers to say, okay, can we get a better price? What is our structure going to look like? For many years, the Risk Pool had $100,000 self-insured retention. You should recall, last year, they went to a $2 million self-insured retention. So they went out and they looked to see what was going on. And they really found, since March of this year to present, they found some really, really bad news. They were not able to get any carrier to even cover the cost between the $2 million and the $3 million that we had in the past. And so the Risk Pool got forced into getting a $3 million self-insured retention. But primarily, a lot of that is because of the social inflation, meaning you had a claim for $200,000 one year, and it's not settling, and now you have to sell it for $300,000. So they've really appreciated, and we've always said, an open claim, the longer it's open, the more costly it is, because things change. And the cost and the economic downturns, things are going to go up in the economic downturns. So we've got market inflation, we've got problem in Washington. We don't have tort caps, we're getting some really large verdicts. And so there was a lot of carriers not even willing to entertain continuing coverage in Washington State, which is what we found. So they're looking at other ways. And so this chart here, you can see the median average US verdicts between 2014 and 2018 significantly went up. And then in the notes there, they basically said in 2019, the median value actually jumped up to $88 million from the $54. So it's like skyrocketed up, these costs of these open claims. Next page, the next page kind of gives you an idea, and this is what was presented to the Board in the summer, which was what, two weeks ago, our summer meetings. So these claims, these are 2012 to 2018, these were open claims. And you can see how the incurred means it's a reserve number. It hasn't been closed, so it's incurred, so it's cost to date plus what they're reserving. So in 2012, they have a case open that was worth $950,000, they're now valuing it at 1.3. So in the right column, you can see the social inflation of these open claims just in a matter of a year. Significant, significant increases. You can see those excessive force, $350,000 to $3,750,000.
And this is the, the new estimates on what the, the awards will be?
Yes, this, when we self-insure, so this is the dollar amount that they're talking about above the deductible. So when they're evaluating how much money that the pool has to set aside to pay those claims within that $3 million, they have to set aside that money if they're estimating to pay out more, if that makes sense. So that was pretty, pretty significant.
I'm a little lost in social inflation in these numbers. I mean, this is 20 times bigger, and, or, for example, your excessive force, $50,000 to 1.1.2 by million, or 3.50, that's 12 times bigger.
That's the actuary looking at what the jury verdicts, what the case laws are settling, and they value those cases.
In the one year?
Yup.
Because inflation's up by 10%?
And then what juries are awarding and what claims are selling out.
But I don't think that's inflation.
That's not purely inflation.
It's up because of, like the Floyd case and the fact around the country that, you know, the police were overreacting.
But George Floyd was in 2020. This says from 2021 to 2022, it's gone up 20 times.
Yup, and these are open cases within the Risk Pool layer. What they valued them at in March of 2021 to what they valued them this year. And that's our actuaries looking at all the numbers and the underwriters looking at our loss runs for the 26 members. So the next slide, please. This next slide tells you, these were the options that the Risk Pool were provided for the new structure. So you have the part on the left is what was adopted, the one on the right was an option. But you can see at the bottom, it's the 2022 Liability Program, and that first line is $3 million. And so the pool was forced, because they didn't get any carriers to cover the $2 million to $3 million, so they were forced to take on additional $1 million worth of claims costs for the 26 counties. Then above that, we drop it to Safety National, they cover from there to the $5 million. And then the next layer of $5 million up to our $10 million layer is shared by two parties. And then we have another program above that, which is another $10 million, which gets us that $20 million as a member we are awarded. So it's Old Republic and AWAC. And we've historically, because it was available and relatively less expensive, we typically, Thurston County has bought that extra $5 million to give us a $25 million limit. Last year, it was like $69,000 for $5 million, it made a lot of sense to do it. We don't have the, we don't have the rate yet for that. We're expecting to get that in the next month.
How much more are they expecting that to go up?
They think it's going to be an increase, but they couldn't give me, they couldn't give us a number.
Sorry, I don't quite get the difference between the two graphs.
Okay, the two graphs here is, basically it's the top 10, the $10 million above the $5 million. Then we're going to go Old Republic 5, and then the next one was going to take the next layer. So like if you had a claim that was $12 million, it would just fall within that green layer. If you had a claim that went to 16, it would hit Old Republic, and then $1 million would go into the upper $5 million. It's a little less risky if they're sharing it on the column on the left, if they're sharing equally.
Right.
So if you have a $15 million verdict, that that extra five is going to be split between those two, as opposed to the first one taking it on. The right side is a lot, is more expensive than the left side. So that's why the Risk Pool went with the left side. If that makes sense. Okay, next slide. So the strategic renewal that the Risk Pool brought forward to the Board was basically $3 million SAR to cover that $3 million. They need $18.9 million to cover the losses that the actuaries are saying, hey, you need. As you saw, there's a $20 million increase in what was already open. They have a 20% increase in actually the insurance that they're buying at those higher layers for us. Then they've decided that, you know, if we're going to have a $3 million SAR, we need to have that capacity to be able to pay those claims out in the event that they come. So they voted to add $5 million to build that stability. So we've been members since 1988, when this pool started. The capital that's in the pool, we've helped contribute to. And that's what pays any above our 250 up to that $3 million. And we've helped build it, and all the members have helped build that. So that's what will help build our, our stability. On the property side, we jointly purchased property insurance through the Risk Pool. It's a modest rate increase of 10%. I budgeted, I believe, 30%. Total insured values, though, we didn't anticipate the property insurers saying, okay, we're going to take all your total insured values and we're going to put a 5% inflation factor on it. That was brand new this year, totally brand new. So they upped our base rate a little bit to .199, up from .173. The Risk Pool, to try to offset that, they have, historically, I think about the last 10 years, they have purchased and allowed us to do property appraisals on all our buildings, for all the members, free of charge. They front the money to do that. And besides having up-to-date property appraisals, the insurers are saying, oh, we need to, we need to have this increased. Next slide, please. Cyber. Cyber insurance, they projected losses about, they decided to go from a 250 deductible to a $500,000 deductible, and they were projecting losses in that range of $445,000. They're budgeting basically a flat renewal, which I was like, yay, there's some silver lining here. So the overall expected rate increase is about 17%, which is about a flat. And so you'll see that rate when we go into the next section. Crime and terrorism, pretty much a flat renewal. We purchased that on the property side and the liability side, so that's pretty much a, pretty much a wash. Next slide, please. So you can kind of see what the rates are here, the cyber, crime, and the standalone terrorism. Cyber, they're, they're planning a flat renewal, but they still haven't finalized the numbers, but they're estimating what the premiums are going to cost, and it won't be over that certain dollar amount.
By flat renewal, you just mean the terms, coverage terms aren't changing?
Coverage terms aren't changing, the price is going up slightly, it's not significant.
For the same.
For the same coverage, correct. Okay, so next slide. Now this is what was provided two weeks ago. And you can see what our liability rate is. So these are all the members. You can see that the left column is current deductibles. Our base rate is basically on, there's our liability with our employees, right? So the base rate is based on the number of hours that we report to LNI. And ours went up about 6.2% from last year. And then we have a deductible factor, and then we have an experience mod factor, you see a .943. That's actually an 8% increase over last year. And so at the end result, we have a 76% increase. Part of that is the cost of the insurance, part of that is our increase in worker hours, and part of that is the, based on our experience mod factor going up. And our experience mod factor has gone up every year since 2019, pretty much. Gone incrementally, .75. Gone incrementally, .75, .779, .827. And they rate us based on our own, so they don't like round you back to the pool average. They, they try to get you to outdo your prior experience mod factor.
I'll read the factors again, please.
We had a 6.2% increase in hours from last year to this year. A lot of that was due to COVID. We had a lot of those new workers. We've increased in staff. We've increased our number of FTEs. So that's a 16, 6.2% increase in worker hours. Then we had an 8% basis point increase in our experience mod factor, which means our claims are coming in more severe than they used to. And they've been doing that for four or five years in a row. We're still under 1. One is, anything above 1 is, you'd see catastrophic increase more than the 76%. But things in our control is that experience mod factor and hours. And we're, you know, we have to have employees to do the job, so.
But we're way, but we're under 1 for experience mod factor?
Yep.
And most of the counties are over 1, but we're the highest percentage?
Yep.
So how's, how's that connect?
That's because it's a, a function of our experience mod factor and our worker hours.
So 6.2% more hours?
From last year. So they're, that's, that percentage
That's so out of line?
Yeah, it's comparing to last year.
And that's so out of line with all these other counties?
Well, this hasn't been on the line for some of these counties in the, in past. There've had Spokane County as an example, who's 80, has had an 80% increase in past years. It's just the storm that's hitting us this time.
So the bottom line on this page is that our payment into the risk pool is going to be 1.1 million more than we had anticipated. For this category. And there's more on the next few pages.
Yes.
For this year.
The next page is our property program. And like I said, despite the risk pool doing up-to-date property appraisals, they had no indication that property insurers, due to cat losses, hailstorms, fires, et cetera, were going to do across our total insured value. We also increased our, our total insured value by adding buildings. We bought a couple of complexes, we bought the building next to building four. And so we did add a couple million dollars to our total insured value in addition to their increase. So here, we have a 29% increase, 115,000 difference between last rate and this year's rate. It was a couple of years ago that the insurers in the United States went through and reevaluated earthquake. And we get hit pretty hard because we're in the earthquake zone. As you can see, the difference in rates, all perils, cat exposure, they're a little bit different. You can see, you can compare us to Spokane above. Quite a bit different, a 3.1% versus an 8.6 cat exposure. Because they're not in the earthquake zone like we are. So that's where a lot of this is coming from.
So with Skamania, they have a negative 9%. What does that mean? Like, are they getting money back?
No, they're saying that their, the rate this year is not, all this is, is comparing last year's rate to this year's rate.
So theirs has gone down?
Theirs has gone down. Then we move on to cyber. This is the modest standalone policy. Remember, we used to have, we used to buy a 2 million policy above what the risk pool was offering, and they declined to offer that anymore. And so we joined the pool and stayed with the pool for their $2 million policy. So we have a $4,065 increase there for our cyber policy.
But in addition, the deductible increases
Yes.
to 500.
Yes, correct. So the pool has to fund that 500. And with that, that increase, that's what they're funding. They're funding that 445,000. So the difference between the 5.67 and 6.62, they're figuring that to go to fund those claims in that range. So this slide, the next slide just kind of gives you a summary of where we're at. The general liability policy. It's a 1.3 million hit. Terrorism, crime, pretty much flat. We don't have the, the number on the 5 million excess. So I was going to recommend that if we can get it within $100,000, if it's going to be over that, maybe we might think about not purchasing that extra 5 million. But it's still, that's still relatively cheap to have a $5 million policy for $100,000. Property renewal, you got a 115,000 increase and a 4,000 increase to liability, or excuse me, to cyber. The underwriting committee of the risk pool, they look at the memorandum of coverage. What's, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense? What should we cover, what shouldn't we be covering? And all the insurers are excluding illegal cannabis.
What does that mean?
So if, we would be covered if WSU is doing a research project on legal cannabis and doing stuff, and something went wrong, we'd be covered. If they're doing found smuggling, something against the government or whatever, the risk pool is not going to cover something like that. So illegal cannabis is not covered. Legal use is covered. So they added the definition of that in the policy.
I have, so obviously, the big hit here is the 1.2 million for general liability, which is like a 50% increase. And I guess I'm just, I'm just not understanding this. To tell me that we have 6.2% more worker hours and our claims are a little more severe. I mean, we haven't, in the time I've been on the board, we haven't been hit with a $14 million judgment or anything, anything in that stratosphere of what Thurston County's had in the past. So it just doesn't compute to me that we're seeing that kind of a, that there must be more to this algorithm than what is being explained to me.
The 76% is, all you're doing is looking at what we were charged last year to this year. It's not a 70, it's not a 76% overall rate increase. It's a 40% rate increase to the pool. We're just paying 76 more percent than we did last year.
So why are we paying that much more and another county's only paying a 24% in, increase?
That column is just comparing what they, what they paid last year.
Yes, I understand, but that's the question. Why is our increase percentage-wise so much more than anywhere else?
Like comparing us to Cowlicks or something like that?
Where anywhere.
Every county, every county.
We're the highest.
Because on, on all the charts, Thurston County stands on top, even on the, on the property liability. Now you understand that we are on the ring of fire very quick and everything else. But in comparison to just Spokane County, from 29% I believe, to 9%. And some other counties who are within the same range, they still don't see that. And on all the charts, I think that's what probably the, the questions are. Seems to, Thurston County is been hitting much more than the rest of the counties' percentage was.
Well, it, yeah, it kind of looks like it's a smoke and mirrors or something like that, but it's really not. They, they have formulas, and they're, matter of fact, they're going to go into, go into detail on Friday. There's a, there's a meeting on Friday where Dirk, the executive director, will go through how all these rates are set and how we compare it to ourselves, not the other counties. But all the factors, the base rates are based on hours of work and then based on our experience mod factor. And then they compare our experience mod factor to the last prior four years. They average it, and they give you a, a factor of what that increase is. And that's how we ended up going from a .82, I think, to .94, which is a significant factor because our, our, our claims are going, getting higher, are getting more severe.
So you're saying we were excessively low before?
They were a lot lower. They, they, it was .82, went out .94. But that factor increases as you get closer to 1.
But doesn't this go back with the past history? I thought that 14 million, I thought that was 16 million total that award.
We've had, well, we've had a lot of large claims. And when the underwriters look at, they look at the entire loss run. They don't just look at the last five years.
That's what I mean, they go all the way back.
Oh, yeah, they look at that and they go, okay, Thurston County, yeah. But that's not reflected in these rates here. We're, they usually look at the formulas, they look, they go back four years to base that experience mod factor. The lion's share of this is our hours and then that base rate. So the risk pool basically had to take a $10 million hit, and they charged that 10 million out based on base rates and experience mod factors. And that's the driving force behind. So the way to reduce our premiums is to lower hours, get better on our claims. Have less claims, have less severe claims. Get our experience mod factor down lower than it is now. That's how.
Lower hours as in less employees?
That's, yeah, and that's not an option. That's not an option. So all we can do is have less claims?
That doesn't make sense.
Even compared to Spokane County, you know, the difference in the, in the hours in, in larger county, I'm sure they have even more type of like claims they, they experienced in Thurston County. And still, their rates are much less.
Well, they're, again, that rate is just comparing to what they paid last year. It's not saying, oh, we're paying 76% of the, of the, the increase. You're just looking at the difference between last year and this year.
The only way this makes sense is that to basically say, we were artif, we were artificially low. So relative to ourselves, we're kind of catching back up. I don't know if that's at all true, but that's the only way that this makes sense. Because, and that's what you're trying to say, you're not comparing to other counties. You're comparing to yourself in terms of the percentage change. But.
Our experience mod factor is going up, and that's a significant.
We're still way lower, I guess, than you, than you look at, are we, are we out of whack by population with other counties? Because, you know, our, our experience mod factor is still in the bottom third. Or bottom quarter of these counties. So
Yep.
Maybe even with this higher rate, we're still paying less per capita than other counties. I would hope that's true. I don't have the math to do, the numbers to do that math, but.
Who are comparables then?
I mean, Kitsaps, Kitsaps isn't in here.
Kitsaps isn't, oh, no. Kitsaps not, no.
You're not a member.
Yakima's paying 1.1. I don't know if they're.
Which is about half of what we're.
Oh, sorry, one, I'm sorry, I'm looking at prior. They're paying 1.5 to our.
So if you look at that, though, I mean, last year, Yakima paid 1.1 million, we paid 1.5. This year, Yakima's going to pay 1.5, and we're going to pay 2.6.
Your experience mod factor is .892, where ours used to be. Ours is now .943. You could, they get a slight decrease in their premiums by increasing their deductible from 250 to 500. But for us, that's about $283,000. We can easily eat that up and just the general claims costs that go over our 250. I look at, I went back 20 years to see how many years we would have saved by, if, let's say, if we increase our deductible to 500,000, we actually save 4.5 million in the last 16 years by staying at the 250. It's another factor, those claims getting higher and higher. There's more claims, costs exceeding the 250 than they ever had before.
And so how many claims, like, the board comes and sees, you know, we've had maybe, in my four years in office, we've had four or five related to the sheriff, you know, in jail. I, I mean, maybe six lawsuits total that you've come to us and asked us for a settlement authority, and they were all like a few hundred thousand, nothing reached a million dollars to my, in my recollection. I mean, is that really out of whack with, with, with past history? I mean, it really hasn't seemed like, for a county of our size and complexity, it really hasn't seemed like we've been, I haven't felt like we've been, oh my God, you know, we're just getting showered with tort claims. I mean, I can't imagine that it could be too much lower.
What we could do is schedule a separate session with our attorneys and executive session to talk about, you know, detailed claims.
Because you'll only see the big ones.
Well, oh, yeah, that was my point. So, sorry, I lost track of my question. My question was, are we only seeing a, like a small stratum of like other claims that factor into this? Or is, are the ones that I've seen all the ones that were, that go into this?
You're seeing just a small string of those.
Because there's littler claims that don't come on board?
There's a whole bunch of littler claims, there's a whole bunch of claims that are sitting open that haven't closed yet, that we're working towards closure.
It's a lot of claims.
Which are coming.
You know, we receive a lot of claims when the striper truck goes in front and it splashes paint on vehicles because they're following.
Which, well, talk about paint and vehicles. One of our capital.
So that's one of the basics. In, in the results years ago, we put a camera behind the striper just to make sure that we cover some.
Yes.
So it's those little claims that, that we see.
So it may be worthwhile to spend an hour looking at the totality of.
Raise the polar works, a claim running into the overhang of Taco Bell.
Yes, yes.
They saw those little things that.
We just have a plethora of, yeah, we do have the jail claims, we do have juvenile claims. We have, we have had our time in the hopper. And thankfully, we had, you know, the risk pool to help support us through this process with all the other members as well. Because every claim that goes above our deductible, we all share in. So whether it be a Mason County case or Thurston County case, everybody's paying towards that.
Don't we have, so, it seems like the two factors that you've identified as driving this are both things that we see coming. Like, we know how many people we're hiring, and we know that we're, we know that these little claims are stacking up. So why are we getting hit right now with 1.1 million dollars that we hadn't budgeted for? Like, why wouldn't we have predicted this in our budget, our budget projection?
Well, I projected a 40% increase.
Instead of 76?
This is above, yeah, instead of a 76% increase. But remember, we do two-year budgets. So I had to budget this, I did a 22 and a 23 budget back in 2020, 2020. So when I, and I redid our budgets in June, going, okay, I'm doing a 30, 40% increase. You know, we're trying to keep rates down, we're trying not to increase our rates. I'm thinking, oh, that still seems pretty high. So then when July came around and I got this rate sheet, I said, Robin, look what we just got! So, you know, it's, it was way beyond what I.
Yeah, we did predict an increase. We didn't predict this kind of an increase.
And the risk pool didn't predict having to go to a $3 million deductible and having to fund that extra million for 26 counties. That's where the driving force, we have to fund those claims cost in that area. And then you add in the increase in the insurance premiums at the higher layer. So you're looking at a $10 million increase to the overall program. That's shared by the 26 counties.
This is a Robin question, I think. So you said 40% was predicted. So is, are we really only short the 36% on top of the 40?
No. No, because what you're looking at here are the amounts for this year. We thought we knew what this year was going to be. This year has increased tremendously in a way we didn't predict. And then when Tammy was forecasting for next year, she built in increases for next year, which you reviewed and approved in the rates just last month.
But this is a totally separate.
And, and what you'll see going forward is it's even more that we absolutely did not anticipate.
Can we switch to the next slide, Erin? The 10-year. There you go. Although this is pretty teeny.
It's your 10-year plan.
This is pretty teeny, but in the middle, you see the 2022 budget. We have revenues coming of 3.2 million. And you're going to see expenses estimated at 4.5 million. That's that 1.3 million adjustment to pay for the 1.2 liability.
Sliding number, you want, sorry?
This is sliding.
18.
18. And if, this is a little different than the normal financial plan you get because this has two columns for 2022. The first column is what you budgeted for this year, 3,222,000 plus. And what we're currently estimating we need this year, 4.5 million. And what we're currently estimating we need this year, $4.5 million. And then there's also two columns for 23, where you see, here's what we thought we'd need when you approved the rates. Now here's what we think we need. Or the first 23 column is the budget, it's not the rate.
Yeah, the first is the budget.
It's the budget. So we already knew we'd be above budget, but not this much.
Right. So then I worked with Robin's team to do a forecast because we need a reserve fund. You'll see at the very top, the beginning fund balance in 24, 25, we're looking at a 4 million. That's, that's the dollar amount that we want to keep available to pay within our 250 deductible.
And you will, you'll recall the conversation that we are obligated to maintain at least 80% of our actuary cost. We like it to be a little more, but we've got to maintain at least 80, which is why we need to increase the rates tremendously.
I mean, this is basically a 50% increase in.
Yeah. So bottom line, we need to increase our rates next year by about.
3.3.
3.3 million. And approximately 2 million of that is general fund.
How much is 2.3?
3.3 and about 2 million, just under 2 million is general fund.
And at some point, we need to talk about the joint severability.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's actually what's driving this whole thing, is the fact that this state does not have a limit on that. And the legislature has notoriously been opposed to it. And I just think that.
Yes, we got a lobby.
That's what we're up against, you know?
Exactly.
And if, if we don't change that legislation, every county's faced the same thing. It's that when we're 1% at fault, we have to pay 99% of the bill. That's what it is.
So the next page just kind of gives you an idea of what that rate looks like between previously adopted rate and the new rate, if you're interested in seeing that. And the last two pages are basically the board decisions that I need. We have an option for deductibles. Our deductible is 250. If we go up to 500,000, we would save roughly $283,000. But then we'd have to fund those claims above that, so it's a much riskier program. So my recommendation is we stay at the 250. And then we have an option to buy the excess 5 million above that. If I can, I haven't got the prices yet, but if it comes in at $100,000 or less, I was hoping that you guys would recommend and allow me to purchase that to get that extra 5 million layer on top. And then we're requesting the 1.3 million budget extension this year. And then change the rates, increasing it by 3.3 for 2023. So those are the four tough decisions I need.
Well, is it really a decision? I think it is.
We don't have a choice.
If the board is put in that position, the only potential decision is whether we go with a 250 deductible versus 500. But in reality, I mean, this is based on a formula, a logarithm, it is difficult to understand and puts the county in that position that really is no options.
We can, we, we have an option around our deductible. We have an option to buy the, the excess or not. But we have to make this payment this year. We're obligated to pay into the risk pool this year. So we'll need the budget adjustment in December to be able to make the payment. And then we are, as long as we're a member of the risk pool, even if we weren't a member of the risk pool, we have to maintain our insurance fund. So the rates have to be pleased.
And also next year, we're strongly encouraged to look, formally look at self-insurance.
Right.
You know, that's worth looking at.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we should go down the route.
But we are self-insured.
Well, we do.
No, we're a standard. We'll be self-insured by ourselves rather than pull a joint self-insure.
That's, that's what I meant.
But the legislation would prevent the need if we can get the legislation passed.
You're, you're part of the WASA legislative. I think that would be a, a, a point to bring that up, to revisit. I think three years ago, it was an effort to deal with the, the joint sever liability. Didn't go anywhere, but this may be a, a good point because there may be a lot of counties facing the same issue.
Oh, they're all facing the same issue?
Yep, so I think.
Now we need to decide, are there more crooked Republicans than there are crooked Democrats? That's what the deal is. Because the lawyers are the ones that are causing this problem.
Okay, decision requested, Commissioner?
It's a big issue and I, we've brought this up numerous times. Commissioner Edwards has been bringing this up, but I mean, it's a huge, it's not like some issue that, oh, nobody knew about this little glitch. Like, this has been a massive issue in politics since the 80s. And I was surprised to move here and find we still had the old kind of joint several principle in place, but it's not just like Thurston County pipes up and it's going to pass the legislature. I mean, there are massive forces that align behind that policy system.
Oh, there's. It has the reason why it hasn't moved in this state, anything.
Was it the trial, was it the trial attorney's lawsuit?
Trial attorneys are always one big part of it, but there's more to it. Trial attorneys don't have that much power.
Insurance company is, is, is an uphill, but piece of legislation.
So should we plan to bring this decision next Tuesday like we do? Yeah.
Yeah, not expecting you to, so I'll bring this on Tuesday morning. So just to clarify what the options the board may have. Is going with perhaps a Tammy's suggestion, a recommendation of continuing to have the 250,000 deductible and.
And then the second one would be the, the 5 million.
The excess.
The excess.
And each one of those carries risks.
And if commissioners have any additional questions about this before Tuesday, please let us know. Try our best to answer. It is very complicated, but if anyone can get answers, it's Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. It is 1:57 PM, we are adjourned. We will be revisiting this, this topic next Tuesday at Agenda Science.